Good evening. I'd like to call the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, to order. If you'd all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Legions. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez. If you could call the roll for tonight's meeting, please.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña.
Present.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Mayor Fox.
I am here. Item four is request for continuance of any public hearing or agenda items. Council have any items they'd like to continue? A hearing done, we'll move to item five. That's all our special presentations. Tonight, I'm very pleased to invite up to the podium Thousand Oaks resident and Eagle Scout, Justin Zoberstein. Justin, would you come on up here? This is a big deal tonight, and let me tell you why. Justin joined the Boy Scouts at the age of 11, and he committed himself to the goal of earning every Boy Scout badge available. Before he turned 18, Justin successfully accomplished that goal, making him one of only 370 scouts in the history of the Boy Scouts to have earned this achievement. Amazing. Absolutely amazing. Justin, I'm sure you've heard this because of your tenure with Scouts, but in the history of our country, folks who have attained the Eagle Scout Award have gone on to do unbelievable things. Some have become astronauts, some have become leaders in industry, business medicine, some have even become Presidents of the United States, and some, Justin, became firefighters. So you are in good company. So, Justin, on behalf of the city council, I want to congratulate you, present you with the city proclamation for really an outstanding achievement. It's something, you can't really appreciate it now, I'm sure your mom and dad, but when you get old and get married and have your own kids, those mirror badges mean a lot. And so, really heartfelt congratulations on behalf of the council and the entire community. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, if you would.
I really appreciate this. This is extremely special for me and my family. My mom's over there. Yeah, my scouting career has taken me to places I never thought I would go, and it's been a remarkable journey that I hope to inspire other young kids to go on. And I think it's a really great program. It teaches you so many great things, so many great values, and I know it's going to help me for years to come, and it's something, if I have kids one day, that I will definitely, they will definitely go through.
Can you picture? Yeah, come on up. Let's go over there and take a picture for the council. Absolutely. Yeah. All right, our next presentation, I'd like to welcome Denise and Dave Bilko and their family. They are the ambassadors of the Donate Life program. And so Denise and Dave, you want to come on up? Donate Life is a nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry, a program dedicated to saving lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Bilko family became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son, Michael, at the age of 20, saved eight people through the organ donation program. In order to encourage Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California Donor Registry, we are proclaiming the month of April as the DMV Donate Life California Month. We encourage everyone to register to be an organ donor through the DMV when you receive or renew your driver's license. With that, let me have the Bilkos come up and say a few words. Okay. All right. Being the great family they are, they're just up here representing it, and they're very proud of it. I know Ms. Bill DeLaPeña has participated in the, what's it, with the float? Right. Very good. And so, on behalf of our community, thank you for bringing awareness to such an important program. Congratulations. You really don't want the council, do you? All right. Let's move to item six. That's our public comment. Madam Clerk, could you call public comment for tonight's meeting, please?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the city council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Our first speaker will be Chase Rashid, followed by Teri Maria. Good evening, sir.
Oh, hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In light of the recent shooting at the Oaks, I felt that I had to come up here and talk about domestic violence. It was in the star that the victim had filed a domestic violence complaint against her husband, or he was her ex-husband, after the, by the time that the incident occurred, but she filed a complaint against him, but it ended up being dropped. This happens more than you would think. There are so many women who file a domestic violence complaint, and then they take it back. Now, we probably will never know exactly what the details were with this particular case, but I've seen this happen. I have a friend, she's abused by her boyfriend. He abused her children. CPS took her children from her because of that, and she let him stay in her home. He would, you know, she felt if she bought him things that he would be nice to her, she thought he would change. If he would apologize, she would, you know, just overlook whatever he did. And that's something that we need to address. We have to foster an environment where women feel that they can come out in public and talk about their problems if they have a spouse that are a partner that is abusive to them. I've seen it in my own family. I've had, on my father's side of my, the family, I had a relative, he murdered his son's mother. This was in 1979, and he did that, and he's on the streets right now, and how that was, how that occurred, I will never understand, but please, and I'll say this, if anyone knows of someone in a situation of domestic violence, and you see it, call the police. If it's a friend, you call the police. They may get angry at you, they may never want to talk to you again, but call the police anyway, because you may save their life. And lastly, I have to thank the first responders. They responded within minutes. I, you know, I actually saw them, I was waiting on a bus, and I saw them coming downhill crests. Thousand Oaks Transit immediately was redirecting all the buses so they would be out of the way of the scene. And I have to thank the police chief. The editor of the Acorn said that he was actually at the scene and was comforting the people that were trapped inside the mall during the lockdown. So, thanks to our first responders, and please speak up on domestic violence, and if you know anybody in a bad situation, tell them to get out, offer them whatever help you can, and if you have to call the police on the abusive partner, do that, even if it means losing your friendship with that person. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Teri Maria, followed by Clint Matakovich.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Fox, council members. My name's Teri Maria. I'm from Newbury Park. I'm a Commissioner on the Thousand Oaks Council on Aging, and I just wanted to share some information on a couple of our upcoming events. Each year, the Council on Aging hosts the Senior of the Year Award Ceremony and Social to recognize just a few of the over 1,200 seniors that give tirelessly to our community. This year, the ceremony will be on Thursday, June 7th, at the Global Adult Community Center. The nomination period for this event is currently open, but it does close on April 1st, so I want to encourage anyone listening or watching that knows of an outstanding senior volunteer to go to tooaks.org/seniors and fill out a nomination form. It's a tremendous event, and we can never do enough to thank our community support, so I do encourage you to take advantage of this nomination period. Lastly, the Council on Aging holds a televised meeting the first Wednesday of every month here in the Civic Arts Plaza in the boardroom. We have terrific speakers each month. The topics vary. Everyone is welcome to join us. If you can't join us live for the meeting, you can watch the meeting live or on replay on TO TV, or you can download broadcasts of prior meetings by visiting tooaks.org and looking for TO TV. Our next meeting is going to be Wednesday, April 4th, at 1:00 PM. Our speaker is Dr. Gabriella Soder. She's a geriatrician with UCLA Health here in Thousand Oaks, and she's going to be talking about health care and health screening for older adults, so I encourage everyone to attend. And lastly, I just want to thank the council for giving me this time, and I look forward to seeing many of you at our Senior of the Year event this June. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Clint Matakovich.
Good evening. Thank you. Thought we'd start anew our citizen-government relations, so, good evening, everybody. Clint Matakovich, lifetime resident of Thousand Oaks. I'd like to read from a couple of recent Acorn articles. The first one is dated March 1st, 2018, and it's regarding the wetland at the end of Alice Drive. Property owner claims that the city negligently caused some sort of a condition where water gathers. I have a geology report in this binder that proves otherwise. I also have, before I was, and the property owner told me, "Don't go out there and take any more pictures." This was years ago, and I honored that. That's his right. But before that, I did take pictures, and I understand the Army Corps of Engineers in this article, to my understanding, doesn't have photographs. I guess they only took aerial photographs, but I also have a report from Magny Environmental Consulting Firm, which calls for restoring the area. So I'll be unpeeling the onion as time goes on here, but I just wanted to kind of scratch the surface that there's another side to this story than what the landowners are telling the public. I myself have, while working at Costco, was threatened a few times with lawsuits because I had pictures on Google Earth, and apparently a buyer backed out of a sale, and it was all my fault for writing letters and making speeches. You know, it's, I'm not trying to make it personal with anybody. This is a land use issue as far as I'm concerned, and I have information I think the public should hear, so that's what I'm going to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes, oh, we have one more speaker card. Sean Meridian.
I'm waiting.
Okay. Very good. All right, so that concludes our speaker cards, and we'll move to item seven. That's the consent calendar.
No.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on with the meeting? Yeah. Okay. All right. Item seven's our consent calendar. Is any items the council would like to call special?
Mayor, can we pull 7E, please, for a quick question?
Okay. 7E, like in Edward. Okay. Any others? All right, hearing done, could we have a motion for the balance of the consent calendar? Mr. Price.
I would move the balance of the consent calendar.
All right. Mr. Price moves. Discussion. Hearing done, prepare the vote.
The motion passes 5-0.
And that is approved. Mr. Adam, item 7E.
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Mr. Finley. Since this 7E is on appropriation for traffic signals, and since the flashing yellow left turn signals have become popular and very efficient, can we expect to see more of those?
Yes, we can. We will be doing those, I believe, a few more this year, and kind of ongoing. We do have budget limitations, but we're working our way through those.
How many do we have so far?
I believe we have close to 10, maybe 11 intersections. We have at least one more in the queue, and several others that will be following up.
Okay. And all working well, as intended?
Yes, they're all working well, and we've really only had one complaint, and it was a little bit of confusion, as we kind of suspected, but so far, very successful.
Good. Good track record. Glad to hear it. Glad to hear we're moving traffic along efficiently. Thank you, Mr. Finley.
Mr. Adam, you don't want to move 7E?
Move 7E, please.
All right. Mr. Adam, move 7E. Discussion. Hearing done, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0. I have two ordinance titles for reading. Ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning and changing zoning classification of property located at 95 Duesenberg Drive, Z 2017-70148. The applicant is Griffin Fine Living LLC, ordinance number 1642 NS. And ordinance amending municipal code relating to official zoning and changing zoning classification of property located at 3525 North Moorpark Road, Z 2007-70299. The applicant is WSL Castle Hill Retirement LLC, ordinance number 1643 NS.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, we're going to move to item 8A. That's our public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you call item 8A for public hearing, please?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider. Agenda item 8A regarding theater lighting system upgrade equipment purchase. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
All right. Thank you. Gentlemen, you're going to move forward with the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Jonathan Serret, Deputy Cultural Affairs Director. I'm joined tonight by Michael Tashco, who's our Theater's Technical Supervisor, to provide you with a report on the recommended purchase of an upgraded lighting system for the Civic Arts Plaza venues. As outlined in the staff report, staff recommends council approval of the purchase of the lighting system upgrade, authorization for the budget appropriation to cover the associated costs from fixed asset replacement, and the adoption of a user fee resolution. At this time, I would also like to apologize, I have to make a small correction to the staff report that was listed in your packet. There is an item in the financial impact. We mistakenly identified $250,000, which had been previously allocated for fixed asset replacement for this capital improvement project. That's a mistake. We actually had $240,000. That was previously budgeted. Through our presentation here tonight, we will briefly discuss the background of the Fred Cavali Theater's technical systems. Our exploration of the opportunity for improvement will help explain what this upgrade is and what it includes. With your indulgence, we have a brief minute and a half video to help demonstrate one of the main components of the upgrade package. We'll describe how this upgrade benefits productions utilizing the Civic Arts Plaza venues, and how it improves our technical capabilities. And lastly, we'll discuss recommended user fees to help offset the ongoing maintenance, repair, and replacement costs, and follow up with any questions that you all might have. For the remaining balance of the presentation, I'd like to turn things over to Michael Tashco.
Thank you, Jonathan. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Michael Tashco, the Technical Production Supervisor for the Cultural Affairs Department. Since we opened our venues in 1994, the Fred Cavali Theater has been fortunate to have an excellent conventional lighting inventory. And when we say conventional, we're referring to fixed-focused individual lighting instruments with single-color capabilities. At the time, automatic lighting was in its infancy. We rarely, we rarely, oh, anyone, they were rarely owned by individual venues, and the high cost of renting an operation allowed them to be used only by the most well-funded productions and presentations. Over the years, even as we keep up to date with conventional lighting upgrades, those groups using our venues and wishing to include automated lighting to their productions either have had to bring them with them as part of their production or rent them from an outside In the fall of 2017, we published a request for bids for 20 moving lights. The equipment necessary to make them operate with our existing controllers and enough trussing and motorized chain hoists to create a hanging lighting position over the front of the Cavali stage, which is a popular place to add lighting where it would not otherwise exist. The rigging equipment, as well as the moving lights proposed, are especially useful for meeting our ever-increasing contractual needs for our cap presentations. To compare and contrast, we have here a picture of a full-stage look created with conventional lights. This is a more traditional theatrical look, designed to create an environment in which a story may be told with choreography, staging, dialogue, sets, and costumes. Now, over the years, as technology has improved, we have seen automated lighting or moving lights, as we more typically call them, become more affordable, and as with the LED fixtures that we are looking at here, contribute to considerable energy savings. These fixtures are, as you see here, are capable not just of fixed focus, but are capable of pan tilt, zooming in, zooming out to make a larger image. Images, they're capable of mixing from four different secondary colors to create just about any kind of color that you could imagine, both through a color wheel and also through the LED generator, lighting generator. And they're capable of putting out patterns for different kinds of design features, like, for instance, they can wash the stage with a leafy pattern. Very sharp, very soft, they're capable of focusing the pattern, or as with many rock and roll shows, they're also capable of displaying colored glass patterns that have any number of colors and are created from more complicated graphics. As illustrated here, energy-efficient automated lights with expanded creative capabilities are designed to become more of a part of the show itself. To further illustrate, we'd like to show you a brief demonstration video featuring the profile version of the high-end Solo Spot 1,000 automated fixture. are used to, but versatile enough to represent another dimension in lighting for virtually any live stage production. Consequently, they become the standard for musical theater, dance, Broadway productions, musical acts. As mentioned, local groups frequently add them to their own productions, and we believe that by owning our own, we will make it easier and more affordable for more of our customers to use them. To that end, we would like to also propose the adoption of a fee schedule to offset the cost of maintaining and eventually replacing our moving light inventory. We've structured these fees to be competitive and, in most cases, less expensive than the average retail rental house. The cost of delivery and pickup is commonly between $300 and $500 round trip, and additional insurance is required to rent from outside vendors. Our users would realize the use of this equipment without these additional costs, and frequently at less expensive than standard rental prices. This concludes our report, and we are available for questions.
Any questions for either Mr. Serret or Mr. Tashco? Any questions? Hold on a second. Got to go to the... Ms. Bill DeLaPeña.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Good evening. Nice to see the theater people here. Every now and then, we get to see the people that make this Civic Arts Plaza tick, so thank you for all of the work that you do, day in and day out. I appreciate that. I wanted to find out whether you can confirm, then, the way I understand it, these lights will replace what we have currently?
They'll replace a certain percentage of what we currently have for specific shows. So, yes, we are using asset replacement funds.
So, do local, do traveling or local companies have the option to go with the less expensive option if their budget doesn't allow for this additional cost?
Yes, absolutely.
And that is something that will be ongoing?
Yes. Indefinitely, we...
Indefinitely.
intend to add this to our regular inventory and our capabilities.
Okay. My question is, is it standard to charge $150 per instrument per day? Is that the going rate?
Yes, all of the touring companies that come in through the Fred Cavali Theater, the majority of them are renting packages in excess of what we've asked for here and outlined in this report. Additionally, we have local companies as well that have included supplemental lighting packages similar to this in their productions also.
Okay, just want to make sure that companies that can't afford it will still have the option indefinitely to go with the other lighting?
It's our intention to maintain our conventional lighting system in place, and to make sure that we can accommodate the needs of all of our renters as well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Price.
So is it safe to assume, then, that an analysis was done of the companies that come through here and lease from an outside source, that the cost of this will be paid off, particularly given that it's cheaper to rent it through us than it would be to get it from an outside source? You're nodding your head.
Yes, sorry, my microphone was off, yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? All right, any follow-up comments from staff?
None.
All right, hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing, and chair will entertain a motion on this item. Ms. Bill Delapena.
Move approval of staff recommendation on item 8A.
All right, Ms. Bill Delapena moves, item 8A, discussion on her motion. Hearing none, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Any way we can possibly use that light showed during Mr. Adams' budget presentation?
Absolutely, yes, nominal fee.
Okay, I'd like staff to make that note. All right, move to item 9A, that's departmental reports. Item 9A is an amendment to the cannabis business selection process, and Ms. Hurtado, I believe, is gonna handle that. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Fox and council members, let me get my PowerPoint set up here. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. I'm here alongside Mark Towne, Community Development Director, to discuss an amendment to the cannabis business application and selection process. So in November, City Council adopted an ordinance to allow for one medical cannabis retailer and one cannabis testing facility. In December, City Council approved the application and selection process for the two potential As part of the application process, a location certification is required. Applicants must find a suitable location and have it certified by the Community Development Department prior to submitting their cannabis business application. The purpose for this certification is to ensure that the location meets the buffer requirements to sensitive uses as required in the ordinance. Two locations were approved, but several others were denied. At the time the ordinance was written, staff couldn't anticipate some of the situations that presented themselves during the location review process. Staff found that some of the denied locations met the intent of the law, but could not be approved based on the letter of the law, and Mr. Towne will explain further.
Thank you, Ms. Hurtado. With regard to the appropriate zone and separation standards, remember that these facilities can only be located in the M1 zone, our industrial park zoning category, and moreover, the ordinance that you adopted specified that there were certain separation standards, or buffers, between the proposed parcel on which the cannabis business would be located and what we term sensitive uses. And the sensitive uses basically fall into four categories: public and private schools, daycare facilities, youth centers, and residentially zoned property. The way that the ordinance is structured is that that distance is measured from parcel boundary to parcel boundary, not from the cannabis business location, per se, to the sensitive use. And so, as we have gone through the process, we've discovered a few different scenarios that we think don't meet the letter of the ordinance, but meet the intent of the ordinance, and so we wanted to bring those to your attention tonight. An example, for instance, is that the cannabis business is within 600 feet of the sensitive use, but there's a major barrier, e.g. the 101 freeway, between the sensitive use and the proposed business location. So although it's within 600 feet, it's across the freeway, as the, you know, as the crow flies, not as one would normally traverse, it's much farther. That's an example of a special case that we've discovered. Another is that the proposed cannabis parcel is within 600 feet of residentially zoned property, but much of our, not much, part of our residentially zoned property are actually green belts, HOA green belts. So we have a proposed business location that's within 600 feet of residentially zoned property, but there are no homes on that parcel, it's a green belt slash brush clearance lot, and so the intent is still met because the business is much further than 600 feet from the actual nearest residentially zoned property with a house on it. The final is, is what I think council can already appreciate, is that in many cases, we have parcel, because it's measured from parcel to parcel, the parcels are within 600 feet of each other, but the actual business and sensitive use are much further away, much greater than 600 feet, it could be 900 feet, 800 feet, but technically, because this is, this distance is measured from parcel to parcel, it does not meet the 600-foot buffer requirement. So those are scenarios that, again, we've discovered through our practical application of this ordinance. We've also recognized that in the M1 zone and other industrial areas, the vacancy rate right now is very low, as we noted in the staff report, it's about 1.2%. So as a result of these types of situations, as Ms. Hurtado mentioned, there's basically only two areas where we've found suitable locations, and what we're really striving here is to create a fair and competitive process with a reasonable pool of qualified applicants. So with that, I'm gonna turn it back over, and I'll be available for questions later, of course.
And as Mr. Towne said, we want to ensure a fair and competitive process, and so, that being said, we extended the application deadline to March 30th in order to allow applicants the opportunity to apply based on possible changes. So staff is requesting to bring back a municipal code amendment on April 10th to address the buffer requirements. We're also seeking approval to modify the application process by requesting the location certification later in the process, not at the time they apply. This will allow the municipal code amendment to be heard on April 10th, and still allow the application process to continue with the goal of returning to City Council in July. Staff's recommendations tonight are to adopt the resolution amending the cannabis business application and selection process, and authorize staff to introduce an amendment to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code on April 10, and staff is available for questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hurtado. Questions for staff? Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. So by putting the location certification after the permit process, we're hoping to engender a little more competition, because two locations really isn't enough, we want to see more than that, correct?
That is correct.
And furthermore, it will give staff a little bit of time to maybe work up some discretionary guidelines that they might use to review these kind of applications?
Correct. So based on scenarios, as I outlined previously, staff will come back to you with actual tax changes to the ordinance for your consideration, to, again, reflect situations that meet the intent of the buffer standard, but maybe not the current letter of the standard.
Yeah, I think that's the key here, it reaches the intent, and each situation has to be judged on its own merits, and I'd like to see staff have a little more discretion so we can get some more competition in these location certifications. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you. I guess I use the words "fair and balanced," this seems like a fair and balanced approach to accomplishing what the council's stated goal was. I might understand, then, that the location certification for any future applications, should the council decide at some point to add a second, that that location certification would come after the other, the business had qualified? That will always be the case going forward?
Yes, the intent is to allow the formal applications to be submitted, and then we will evaluate the location proposed, proposed location, as part of our location certification step. Right now, we are envisioning that as part of the second step in what is overall a four-step process, so instead of before step one, now it will most likely become part of step two, which is still during the ranking phase, so that's important, because site is relevant as we go through the various proposals.
Sure. And if I might just jump in, I think more to the point, what I think Councilmember Price was suggesting, Mark, is that the, any future consideration of additional dispensaries or anything else, this would be the same criteria by which we would work on going forward.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the spirit of the law is paramount, really. I know what the law said, and I know what we intended, and what we intended is the spirit that you're getting to here, so I think it's important that we make this a fair process and get as many qualified applicants as are interested. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Price. We have three speakers on this item. First speaker would be Paul, is it Juven Eddy? Followed by Joe Kyle, and last speaker would be Patrick Spillane. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council members. I'm a Newbury Park resident. I am very thankful that the City Council is allowing this business use here. As a resident, I would love to apply for this license, but an M1 zone really is prohibitive, and I don't know that the city's trying to do that. If you look on LoopNet, there's 11 leases that fit your criteria, and the smallest is 32,000 square feet. I don't think that that's what we're trying to achieve. You know, you've mentioned phase one and two and three, I appreciate and applaud you moving the phase to the, phase one to the 30th. However, it doesn't make sense unless you end the requirement for not only the site, but some of the other requirements that are directly related to the site. We'd love to show you our finances, we'd love to show you a business plan, but I can't show you a schematic for HVAC during phase one when we don't have a location yet. You know, we've considered even purchasing a building, because it's so prohibitive to try to find one, but, you know, M1 is an office, and there are some offices that meet the criteria that makes sense, but don't, aren't in the letter of the law. And I appreciate that we're opening our community up to this, I know that there's, if you look on Weed Maps, I don't know how familiar you are with this, there are over 10 companies delivering marijuana in our community, and not, our community isn't getting the benefit from that tax revenue, and I think that needs to change. Everyone that uses marijuana in this community drives, if they're not getting it delivered, drives 20 miles to LA to, you know, pay them tax revenue, and I think that's a mistake. I've owned a dispensary in Los Angeles, my mother died of cancer in '05, and she asked me to provide her medical cannabis, and I couldn't, I didn't live in that state, it wasn't allowed. And that's, it irked me for years. And when I moved to California 10 years ago, I was all wholeheartedly in this business. You know, the city of Los Angeles changed its rules twice and put me out of business with the new recreational law. I will open up, if I can open up here in Los Angeles again, once they get their rules right, but I would love to make money in my own community, be a community partner here, and, you know, you see, this is a wonderful place we live in. You know, Justin and the other family that, you know, give back to this community, I'd love to give back to the community, but we have to open this regulation up to residents as well as just someone that can lease a 32,000-square-foot commercial space. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joe Kyle, followed by Patrick Spillane. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Joe Kyle. First, I'd just like to say congratulations to Mayor Fox and to Mayor Pro Tem McCoy. Secondly, in staff speaking, I'd like to state that schools are the only sensitive use that has been mandated from the state, excuse me, so definitely check into it with Dave McPherson, I'm sure you'll check into that, that you're not creating a situation where you would allow a local permit to be issued, but not then a state license to be issued because of that sensitive use. Allowing for location certificates later within the process would allow for applicants to have more time to search for a valid property. More time for applicants to now adjust to new requirements would be good, if we could extend it maybe a little bit past the March 30th deadline that has been extended, because that only gives us 10 days from today. I feel that definitely making the location certificate later on the process is going to increase the amount of applicants, but I do not feel that it was going to increase it to the amount that you guys were expecting. Definitely with the low amount of M1 space that is available already, that is making it very, very hard to find a valid space, but there is also other landlords and entities basically calling other landlords and telling them that they will deal with it. We are helping three entities with permitting, and pretty much every single landlord that they've called has heard the same story, that other people are dealing with it. So I even feel with these things that there's still going to be a low approval rating of location certificates because of that very reason, and I applaud and thank the city for trying to keep it honest and open and fair as possible, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kyle. Patrick Spillane will be our last speaker.
Good evening, Council. Patrick Spillane with Legendary Organics of Thousand Oaks. We just want to say, as one of the applicants with two certified locations, that we support the city's efforts to create a robust competitive process for this. As part of the recommendation too of staff in authorizing the staff to suggest an amendment to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code regarding the separation for sensitive uses, we also wanted to make the suggestion or recommendation that in revisiting the ordinance that the staff solicit from applicants, minor technical recommendations for revision to the ordinance that would help put it in best practices with some of the industry. I'm suggesting sort of minor technical recommendations, but as it is very prescriptive in how the business operates to a lot of issues, there really is no gray area in being compliant or non-compliant. So for businesses that are looking to be 100% compliant, we would like to be able to make some small recommendations to put some technical efforts into place that would correct some complications and also streamline some of the operations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speaker cards on this item. We'll go back to staff, is any follow-up comments, concluding comments from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few comments. What we are proposing tonight was developed in close coordination with the city's cannabis consultant, Dave McPherson from HDL Consulting. The overall process, in fact, that we're following was recommended by Mr. McPherson, who has basically administered this type of a process in multiple cities throughout the state.
Good evening, Council. Patrick Spillane with Legendary Organics of Thousand Oaks. We just want to say as one of the applicants with two certified locations that we support the city's efforts to create a robust competitive process for this. As part of the recommendation too of staff and authorizing the staff to suggest an amendment to the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code regarding the separation for sensitive uses, we also wanted to make the suggestion or recommendation that in revisiting the ordinance, that the staff solicit from applicants minor technical recommendations for revision to the ordinance that would help put it in best practices with some of the industry. I'm suggesting sort of minor technical recommendations, but as it is very prescriptive in how the business operates to a lot of issues, there really is no gray area in being compliant or noncompliant. So, for businesses that are looking to be 100% compliant, we would like to be able to make some small recommendations to put some technical efforts into place that would correct some complications and also streamline some of the operations. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our speaker cards on this item. We'll go back to staff. Any follow-up comments, concluding comments from staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few comments. What we are proposing tonight was developed in close coordination with the city's cannabis consultant, Dave McPherson from HDL Consulting. The overall process, in fact, that we're following was recommended by Mr. McPherson, who has basically administered this type of a process in multiple cities throughout the state. We are tonight trying to be proactive. We're trying to be reasonable. This is new territory for us. But ultimately, the decision does rest in your hands in terms of final selection. What I would recommend is that we continue according to the planned schedule, which, as you may recall, planned on the end of that Phase Four, which is ultimately the phase in which you would make your selection. That's tentatively scheduled for July. And so, the changes that we're discussing tonight would not affect that ultimate goal of having the finalists in each category, the medical dispensary and the testing lab before you for your consideration that month. And with that, I will turn it over to Chief Hagel.
Thank you so much. During one of the comments, I just wanted to circle back around where the gentleman stated that there are 10 delivery services in Thousand Oaks. And I wanted to make it very clear for public safety, those are illegal. So, I want to make sure that the misunderstanding is on some of the, and I'm not going to name the social websites, people can order up all kinds of illegal things in America, not just illegal deliveries of cannabis. So, I just want to make that clear. There are no legal marijuana delivery services in Thousand Oaks. Thank you.
All right, Chief. Thanks. All right. That concludes our testimony and staff report on this item. This is a departmental report. So, the chair is open for a motion or discussion. Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question. When's the deadline now? 10 days, right?
March 30th. March 30th, correct.
One of the speakers suggested, maybe in the spirit of competition, would it make sense extending that a little bit beyond 10 days?
Well, we took that into consideration, and we consulted with Mr. McPherson. And the fact of the matter is, we want to be back before this council in July. And we feel very strongly that we're able to complete the application process, still have the deadline be March 30th, go through the process of the ordinance amendment, and still be able to complete the entire review process with sufficient time by July.
Yeah, I'm sure you could. I think the speaker was trying to make the point that we give more opportunity to other applicants.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Adam, just my point of what we're doing tonight.
Oh, there you are.
My point of what we're doing tonight is that the policy that we're changing tonight, again, policy tonight and ordinance next time. But the policy is that we were requiring initially that they had a show-certified location by this early month, by the earlier this month. So, now we're extending that. They don't have to actually provide that certification until another stage of the process. So, the applications still have to be due. We're extending it to the 30th to make sure that, hey, if they weren't going to participate because they couldn't find a place at beginning of March, they were extending that time. So, now they know they don't have to show the certification yet, but they can still do the application and go through that process. At some point in time, though, they have to show that they have a location.
Okay.
So, that's why we're doing that.
I understand. Okay, that clears it up. Thank you. And just one other quick question on the, another speaker talked about finding a location and the square footage. And I think he mentioned that all he was able to find was a 32,000-square-foot space. The first question is, what kind of square footage are we looking for? What would one of these dispensaries need? And how would you address that concern about spaces being too big for what we need? Or are they too big?
My comment on that, and I'll go back to, since I was involved with this with Mr. Ware extensively, is that we're going to see the applications. We're going to, we're going to ask them to provide, what's your proposal? And ultimately, we're going to select those number of proposals that we think are the best for our community based on what you have asked us to produce to you. And then you're going to look at those proposals, and they might, they might range from sizes. We don't know that yet. But we do have parameters that we put in there that if they have this type of use, there's some guidelines and some rules they have to follow. But as far as things like how many employees, the size, that's going to be up to them to demonstrate, hey, this is what we're proposing. And I'm sure we're going to have a wide range of those. And it's up to you to say, what's best for us? What makes sense? What makes sense for a successful business in our community in the M1 zone?
All right. So, we're going to make them put it in front of us, and then we'll judge with what they come forward with.
Just like, right. We're going to be reviewing proposals at that some stage.
All right. Thank you.
And I do think it's fair to state, and perhaps Mark can clarify, we, you know, we have two locations certified so far in the process, and they're not, I don't believe 32,000 square feet.
No. We have basically certified one business in one location and three different tenant spaces in one other location, the same, essentially the same building slash complex. But several of the sites that we have already looked at and certified are very, very modest in size. And in the M1 zone, you have a great range of tenant space size from quite small to quite large. And so, that will ultimately be up to the applicant in terms of what best fits their business plan.
All right. Ms. Bill Delapena, and then Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. I'm glad that Councilmember Adam asked the question because I wanted to ask that question initially. And it's explained in the staff report as City Attorney Patrick Heher says that applicants can come, can be certified after the application deadline. Now, is there, I'd like to get some feedback from that if possible, since this is not a public hearing. Maybe we can ask Mr. Kyle for a response. But is, why do we have this July set deadline? Why can't we wait until maybe September?
Well, the deadline that I mentioned is based on our plan going forward to essentially bring this entire issue through the process and to you before the August hiatus, so that there's a continuum of review and action. We actually, in terms of potentially extending the deadline, we made the application available online in mid-January. So, as of the proposed deadline of August 30th, it will have been available for two and a half months. So, it has been out there. It has been available. And that's the overall logic of the July date.
Yep. It does seem like a smaller window now that, since we've never done this before, as we all have said, this is, this is a first for us. So, perhaps we can show a little bit more flexibility. But Mayor Fox, would you mind if we get a response from Mr. Kyle on this?
Let me let Mr. Powers talk a little bit about scheduling.
One of the things I wanted to touch on, and then I'll let Ms. Hurtado speak as well, is, and getting to your point, Councilmember Bill Delapena, you know, we've, we've been, and this is an example of, I think, that we've tried to create a process that's been very transparent, very open, and very above board. We even hosted a open forum session here to, with interested applicants. This response tonight is in reflection of a number of things that have come before. So, these are folks that are already contemplating significant investments in their business. They're already pretty far down the path in terms of building their business plans. And this is a significant investment and undertaking. And so, anyone that I would anticipate is interested in doing this is pretty far along in that process. So, I think our thought in making this modification would allow those folks to perhaps come into the fold, maybe several more in that. But, you know, certainly I would, we would defer to the council in terms of what your pleasure is in extending it. I don't think that it's going to significantly impact the number of applicants that we end up with in the process. And our goal was to bring this back to you, bring it to closure. We've been about a year and a half on this, this process, and bring it to closure before the council recess this summer. Ms. Hurtado?
And I just wanted to add that we do have applicants who have already secured leases. So, we have people who have already invested significant money and continue to do so. So, if we don't move along at a fairly rapid pace, with caution, of course, then those folks would lose out on that additional investment. So, we want to be cautious, yet expedient in the process.
All right. Mr. Price?
I'd still wanted to hear from Mr. Kyle, though, if possible, since it's not a public hearing. Can we do that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Just keep it brief, Mr. Kyle.
Yeah, I'll keep it short and sweet. Yep. Basically, because of the pushback from those landlords, because of the location certificate, some of those entities have not put into the effort into exactly what you guys want spelled out. Definitely, you know, the best entities have business plans already ready to go. And so, even five, 10 days of allowing to them to just perfect it and polish it off because the location certificate is not needed now. But entities, because of the pushback that they saw from those landlords and no location certificate was available from multiple, multiple different locations, they kind of just gave up at that point. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Sure. Ms. Bill Delapena?
Just one more question from Mr. Heher. Was the, you said at some point in time they would have to show a certification. When is that point in time?
We're looking at stage two at this time. So, again, we're, when we're doing RFPs, whether it's, I mean, our city has a great track record of doing this. And when we're receiving proposals, we evaluate, is there a problem or in the process? And again, this is a new process for us with this type of use. But in fairness to everybody, we extended a short time just so we know that they can do their applications. In fairness, we add the additional time that they have to show proof of a location. At the end of the day, though, it's important that they do show that location because it's a, it's a key element for the overall review of the applicants. Where are they located? What type of building? Where's, you know, all those factors come into play. And so, I will say, as the city manager mentioned, in fairness to everybody, we pushed this out a little bit. I think we're on schedule. By changing this policy, we're giving those individuals a chance to do their applications in on time, and also at some point in time, confirm a location. If they can't do that, unfortunately, they're not one of the individuals that can meet that burden. But I think what we're doing is a fair process. I will also say that we brought this to you because we had this, this issue arise. And so, we thought, let's take care of this right now instead of waiting until after the applications are due and then have that somebody come up and saying, hey, I didn't get a chance because I couldn't find a location. We're trying to make sure we have the best pool we can get, and this is the process, I think, to do that. So...
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Price, and then Mr. Adam.
Thank you. You know, the council took action on this item last summer, I believe it was last summer, when we gave direction to staff to come back with a model ordinance. And there was tremendous interest once the council decided that there was to be a single, at this point, medicinal facility allowed in the city. So, I don't, you know, I think those that were interested were in the game really early. I know that those that had an interest but couldn't get the certification were notified in advance of this meeting here tonight, over a week ago now. And in terms of allowing people to find alternate locations or opening it up to other than the M1 district, the council was very intentional in citing this type of business. I, for one, would have no interest in citing it anywhere else. And I recognize that we have a vacancy of, what, 1.2 or 1.3%? Good for us. That's a good thing at times. So, I wouldn't have any, any interest in extending it beyond the 10 days that we're already allowing in this case. So, I would, however, like to ask staff a question in regards to our, I believe it was the final speaker there who spoke of technical changes or advice. Do you have any response to that? Because I am, at the end of the day, interested in having an ordinance that is going to work for everyone.
I will say, I will state that certainly if people are going to bring comments to, to the staff that, hey, we would like to see this in the ordinance, or we would like to see that in ordinance, we would look at that. Again, we were focused on this one issue for our ordinance, talking about the distance. So, our goal for doing the ordinance would be to focus on that. And to expand it past that would probably be difficult unless it was something that was so, you know, nonsubstantial, and it wouldn't affect any application, I could see entertaining that. And we would bring that to you when we do the ordinance, of course. We would acknowledge that. You heard a speaker talk about the state law regarding schools. Our ordinance changes are going to be consistent with state law. And there is one requirement, the 600 feet within, to a school, that is one that we can't change. But the other ones, again, we're trying to be consistent with that. So, that's why everything was 600 feet. And now what we're trying to do is saying, okay, we can modify that a little bit. But at the end of the day, our ordinance is going to be consistent with state law, so they can get their state license, of course, as well. And we're going to fix this little issue that we have here. And I won't say it's a problem, but just an issue that we've, we've realized, and help the applicant pool.
And thank you for that response. And I recognize, just as we did not anticipate this little hiccup, I'm just looking down the road further ahead to, are there other issues that we failed to anticipate? Because this is a brand-new day for us, if you will, that those who have been in the business might be able to help us with. And I just want to make sure that staff is open to at least listening to what those folks have to say. And I know you are. But the way it was left didn't feel right to me. So, I want to make sure that anybody who does, who's involved in the process and has a minor, what they think is a minor technical change, and that will be determined ultimately by others, but that they should make that suggestion to the staff and ask that it be forwarded to council.
And I'll just sort of speak to that point, that absolutely that will be staff's perspective. We have leveraged the services of a consultant, Dave McPherson. The reason which staff has on-boarded Dave from the very outset here is that he's conducted similar processes for dozens and dozens of cities across California. So, as we created our criteria, that criteria was based upon best practices across the spectrum. And so, as we continue to move forward with this, and this was one of those examples, that he will be using, and I imagine in other cities that he's talking, talking with. So, we will absolutely, you know, try to incorporate anything that we think is going to make it a better process or changes that need to be made going forward.
Mr. Adam?
Well, thank you. Yeah, and I would have expected at this stage of the process, we would have seen more than five applicants in two locations, to be honest with you. I was thinking we'd see dozens, but maybe I was wrong. Anyway, I got, I want to ask Mr. Kyle another question, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Kyle, maybe we'll put you up with the staff next week.
So, Mr. Kyle, you heard what the staff says, by extending this deadline, maybe another 15 days to mid-April or something, wouldn't it yield any new applicants, in their opinion? And, but do I hear you saying you think it would?
Doing what you guys are doing is going to increase the amount of applicants already. Extending it five, 10, 15 days is, will help, in my opinion. But, you know, realistically, it's the location certificates that, you know, it's the push from the landlords, the pushback. So, that's realistically what it is. So...
So, the extension past March 30th would be not helpful?
You would bring in more applicants, but would those applicants be able to find locations is the question. Already, you have, you know, multiple applicants at multiple locations, you know. So, it really, it just, it depends when those location certificates have to be actually solidified by. And then I believe they, at a previous meeting, they said Phase Three is when those, you can only have one applicant per actual location certificate. So, I may be wrong there, but...
So, we'd get applicants, but not locations?
That's the hard part.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Kyle.
Thank you.
All right. This is a departmental report. Any concluding comments from staff? All right. Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion on this item.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to move, move staff recommendation one and two.
All right. Mr. Price moves recommendations one and two. Discussion on his motion. Hearing none, I'll just comment, I think this is a common sense approach. I think the comments and letters that council received raised some legitimate points. And I think staff's response back and the items that we're placing in place makes sense. And I think the timeline, in deference to the city manager, has been worked out very, very well over the last year and a half or so. And I think council's done a good job with transparency in managing this issue. So, I think we just need to stay the course. We're doing a good job here. So, with that, prepare the vote, please. So, I think we just need to stay the course. We're doing a good job here. So, with that, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
All right, that is approved. Item 9B is a general plan, housing element, annual progress report. Mr. Town, you're going to handle that as well?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see.
So, just if you could take your conversations to outside the chamber, that would be great. All right, Mr. Town, you're up.
Thank you. This is your annual general plan and housing element progress report, which is required to be submitted by all cities and counties in the state, to the state of California, by April 1st. That deadline is coming right up. And as the title implies, it deals with both progress in terms of implementing our general plan and also progress toward implementing goals in our housing element. Key elements of the report include, and they're described in the report in some detail, so I won't reiterate all of those here, but it looks at policies that are described in our general plan elements and where we've been able to implement them. Examples are open space acquisition, sidewalk construction, those types of projects. The report also describes how we're doing in terms of meeting our regional housing needs allotment. And that is a housing target that is provided to us from the state. And then, it also contains a status report on the Housing Successor Agency. This is a table that's in the staff report, which I thought was important to review tonight. And what it basically shows is our regional housing needs allocation. And if you look in this left-hand column over here, that was the allocation or the target that the state gave to the City of Thousand Oaks. And so, you can see there's a total number of units at the bottom that the state would like us to basically support in terms of their eventual construction during this eight-year housing element period. But then, almost more importantly, if you look at the numbers that comprise that sum, you can see that it's broken out into four different income categories. And those are above moderate, moderate, low, and very low. So, you can see how a number is assigned for each one of those categories, which add up to 255. So, if we sort of fast-forward to the right-hand column over here, what you can see is that this is the remaining arena that we still have to hopefully accomplish in the next three years, or final three years, in fact, of our eight-year housing element period. And if you look at the categories, you can see that, let's start from the bottom, we've more than met our above moderate target. We have no remaining need. We've more than met our moderate income requirement. But you can see that we still have 56 units that we, the state would like us to meet in terms of low-income housing and 67 units of very low income. And moderate, by the way, is defined as 80 to 120% of area median income. So, I don't want to get sort of too technical here, but when we talk about these amounts, they're in relationship to the area median income for the County of Ventura. And low is below 80% of area median income and very low is 50%, to give you an idea. So, we do have remaining units to hopefully see built in the next three years. As you know, there are several projects in the pipeline right now, including a couple of mixed-use projects that you've already seen through the pre-screening process, which will include some low and very low units, which hopefully will assist in meeting those goals. The report also includes a status of our Housing Successor Agency. These are just a few facts from that summary expenditures for monitoring basically all of the assets of the agency, which is the second row here. That's a combination of real property that the agency owns, as well as outstanding loans to various entities for affordable housing projects in the past. And so, with that overview, staff's recommendation is that you receive and file the 2017 General Plan slash Housing Element Annual Report and direct staff to go ahead and provide copies of this report to both the State Office of Planning and Research and to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Questions for staff? Mr. Adam.
Yeah, looking at the different elements and the changes that we've made in the staff report, for example, the land use element, it looks like we've made a lot of changes to accommodate assisted living facilities, memory care facilities. We certainly are accommodating our senior population. As far as housing there, it looked like we've only made one change to nine-tenths of an acre, which seemed to me to be a fairly small amount. We're certainly accommodating our bicyclists and our pedestrians with all the bike lanes we're putting in the sidewalks on Conejo School, Westlake Boulevard, Moore Park. And we're certainly pursuing our open space with the Rasno acquisition, the Skyland acquisitions, et cetera. The one thing that I didn't see was housing. I mean, 328 permits in four years works out to about 80 permits a year. So, I would hardly call this an onslaught of, a tidal wave of housing enveloping the City of Thousand Oaks. Contrary to what some may say, I don't see any near-term threat to density or traffic or some of the fears that people tend to want to bring up. It seems to me that we need more housing, and this is, when do you agree that this is a very tiny amount of housing starts that we permitted in the last four years?
It's very modest. I mean, those are very modest numbers. And I think it reflects the fact that most of the city is essentially built out in terms of residential neighborhoods that we all know and appreciate. And that is why the development that we're seeing today is really redevelopment, not in the traditional sense, but redevelopment of underdeveloped properties in the city rather than, quote-unquote, greenfield development.
Yeah, infill properties, as you say, that are underdeveloped or can be repurposed for the purpose of more housing. That's what we're hopefully seeing in the future. But the days of sprawling outward are long gone in this city.
That is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Town.
Any further questions from staff? I have one speaker card of this item, John Sheridan. Mr. Sheridan's going to pass. Okay, very good. Any follow-up items from staff, Mr. Town?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion on this item 9B.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Mr. Adam.
Yeah, to receive the General Plan Housing Element Annual Progress Report, 9B.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 9B, items one and two. Discussion on his motion. Hearing none, prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries 5-0.
And that is approved. Our final department report is item 9C, and that's the parameters for the comprehensive general plan update, and Mr. Town's going to handle that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At a prior council meeting, you requested that staff provide the parameters for a comprehensive general plan update. And so, that is the reason that this item is before you tonight. The purpose is twofold. One is to receive the report and provide direction to staff. And then, secondly, if council should opt to consider an update to our general plan, a comprehensive update, then direct staff to seek grant funding this calendar year. First of all, just a few quick points. What is a general plan? We use that term, you know, routinely in various settings. Really, it consists of a vision that the community itself would form that really guides the city in terms of its physical development as it moves forward. It is composed of a number of parts, which include policies, implementation measures to make those policies a reality, and then a variety of exhibits of all fashion. Typically, when we talk about a general plan, comprehensive update, we're looking at 20 years. That's the typical horizon. And the state recommends that cities and counties update their general plans periodically, generally every 10 to 15 years. Again, when we talk about the general plan, it's really composed primarily of elements. And I analogize these to chapters in a book. And there are seven required chapters in the book as mandated by the state. Those include circulation, as you can see, conservation, housing, land use, noise, open space, and safety. And then, in the most recent state updates, we are also required to look at environmental justice as a new topic. And they also suggest other topics, as described in your staff report. But cities and counties also have the ability to adopt optional general plan elements that reflect particular interests of that particular community. And in our case, over the years since our first general plan was adopted in 1970, there have been six optional elements that have been adopted. Some, such as the community forest element, were very recently updated. Others are quite old. Originally adopted, for instance, public buildings and services, public services, I should say, is the best example, adopted in 1972, and it's never been updated since then. And that's basically because at that time, it referenced public works improvement plans. And now, those plans are, they manifest themselves in various forms, in part through the city's capital improvement program. But you can see that residents in particular have considered the community forest important, recreation important, which references the park district's master plan. Scenic highways is another important topic. So, when we talk about updating the general plan elements, we always need to focus on the required elements first, and we update those sort of periodically as needed. The housing element is the only element that's mandated by the state to be reviewed and updated on a mandated basis every eight years for a city that meets its deadlines. And in the past five years, as I'm sure you all recall, you have approved five updates. So, five elements over the past five years. We updated the open space element, for instance, as well as the conservation element. Also updated the housing element in 2013. We updated the safety element in 2014. And then, last year, as I mentioned, we updated the community forest element. So, five elements updated in the last five years. An important part of the general plan is what we call the land use and circulation elements. And those are composed of goals and policies, but also they're both depicted on this map. This is your land use map, which addresses both uses, what type of uses and where they are planned to be located geographically, and then also the city's circulation system. And this exhibit actually denotes the number of lanes that are anticipated for all the major arteries in the city. This, both these elements are updated typically at the same time and periodically. The last time we updated both of these was back in 1997. We have made amendments, individual changes to particular sites on a regular basis, maximum as for a year under state law. But the last comprehensive review of both these elements was back in 1997. And so, again, when we talk about a comprehensive update, what does it really look like? We look at all of the elements and policies together to ensure that there's internal consistency between all the elements, that there's not conflicts, there's not duplication. As I mentioned, if we were to undertake a comprehensive update, we would look out 20 years. So, we'd be looking at a horizon of 2040. You would have the option through this process to combine elements. The state actually recommends that to try to streamline the process. You could add an optional element theoretically, or you could delete an optional element as well. I think, looking forward, the topics that would be updated, that would receive the greatest amount of time in terms of the update, let me put it that way, would be land use, housing, circulation, and noise. Housing, because the next cycle is already coming up, as you heard from the last item on your agenda. And then, the noise element, the last time we updated that was in 2000. So, it's been almost 18 years since we updated that element. I won't go through all of these in detail, but there are basically nine steps in the process, ranging from the initial selection of a consultant. Typically, there's identification of a steering committee, then background conditions are reviewed, community goals are reviewed, alternatives are identified. In fact, last night, the County of Ventura hosted a workshop in Thousand Oaks on their general plan update. I went to that, and the focus of that was to identify priorities to basically substantiate alternatives that their staff would come up with. So, they're in the middle of a comprehensive update as we speak. And then, that would form the basis for a preferred alternative, which is the basis for the actual general plan update. And we need to analyze this in terms of CECO, which the biggest part of that is a traffic analysis citywide. And then, that is circulated for public comments and then public hearings. Some of the benefits of a comprehensive update is that it's, of course, a chance for the community to take a look at its vision for how it wants Thousand Oaks to develop in the future, areas to preserve, areas where growth is appropriate. Those are always important considerations, constraints, natural constraints that would affect both of those goals. We use it as an opportunity to update policies and implementation measures that reflect community goals, needs, and also new legal mandates. And in this case, it would really help us to set the stage for the next housing element update, which is due in 2021 in the fall. But there are costs. There's time and costs associated with the comprehensive update. Based on our review of other cities, staff's experience, and contacts with consultants that do this on a sort of week-in, week-out basis, the timeframe for a comprehensive update of our general plan would be approximately three years. Now, you get probably a little credit for the recent updates that are pretty fresh. But the land use, circulation, noise, goals and policies, and public outreach in particular, takes a significant amount of time. And so, that's the approximate timeframe. We could probably shave a little bit of time off that. But many other cities and counties take four and five years or even more to update their general plans comprehensively. Second is the cost. Based, again, on that survey, the cost is probably in the range of $1 to $1.5 million for a comprehensive update. Now, that could be offset by grants or development fees. Many cities, for instance, charge development fees as part of their fee structure. A small amount is added on to building permits, for instance, to help offset these types of costs on an ongoing basis. We don't have any fee of that type right now. And then, also, as you're aware, there was a recent package of housing laws that were passed by the governor. And one of those, SB 2, will provide, as you can see, a very significant amount of money each year for housing-related needs. And in this calendar year, 50% of that is for grants for long-range planning, such as what we're discussing right now. And so, with that, staff would simply recommend that you receive the report, provide us with whatever direction you feel is appropriate. And if you do opt to consider a comprehensive update, then I would suggest you authorize us to seek grant funding to offset some of those costs. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Questions for Mr. Town? No questions?
I hit the button.
Okay, it's not coming up. So, Ms. Bill Lopena?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Town. The state recommends that cities do this every 10 to 15 years. Realistically, how often do cities in California do this? Realistically, how often do cities in California do this?
I think realistically, it's, that's a tough question. It's probably more like 20 years plus. The county hasn't updated their general plan comprehensively for Ventura County in 30 years. So, you know, every 10 to 15 years is sort of tough to do, just in terms of the time and cost. So many cities take attack, as we have in the past, where they update individual elements periodically and are just sort of constantly in the process of updating individual parts of the general plan rather than the entire plan as a whole. In this case, as I mentioned, there are certain benefits to a comprehensive update, but there are costs as well.
I would imagine that the biggest deterrent is the cost of updating the general plan.
Very well it could be.
If we were to go through with a general plan update, what would it do to the base number of units that we currently have?
Well, it would most likely decrease the base number of units citywide because what you would ultimately do is look at all of the various residential and non-residential areas and adjust those categories per community goals and needs, including state mandates for housing. But overall, you would update the land use map to better reflect the as-built density that we have in the city.
And the state is also concentrating or urging cities to concentrate on elements such as climate change, healthy communities, economic development, and environmental justice. Having a climate scientist on staff here at the city of Thousand Oaks, sustainability and our sustainability department, it would make a whole lot of sense to me to include that, especially since we, in terms of air quality, we are still violating some of the areas regarding air quality, according to the EPA. The visioning project, which we conducted some four years ago or so, is that something that we could use as a basis to get this started, where people were, the residents were telling us what they wanted to see in the city by 2050, I mean, 2064?
Absolutely. There is a lot of great community input through the visioning process, a lot of important long-term recommendations, and those are the exact types of ideas that should be considered during the review of the goals and policies for the general plan.
It seems to me that this is something that is overdue, but also very expensive. Could our general fund absorb this cost, given if we were lucky enough to receive some grants?
Well, I'll take that one for you, Mark.
I'll let the city manager respond.
You know, these are, should the council wish to pursue this, it would be like any one-time obligation. The council will need to direct funds through it. It's currently not budgeted for in this cycle. So the council would have to identify funding and allocate that funding towards this project.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? All right, we have one speaker card, John Sheridan. Going to do it this time, huh?
Doesn't matter where I stand.
There you go. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I apologize for my dress. I don't know much about how all of this stuff works. One question I have is the, something that I read about Measure E. Is Measure E something that would have possibly in this re-updating of the general plan, would Measure E be possibly reinterpreted? That's something I heard. I'm sorry if this question is completely out of line, but I wonder if you guys could answer that.
Patrick, you want to go ahead and answer that?
I think Mr. Town is ready for this question, if it's at the chair's or the mayor's desire to have staff answer it this time.
Anything else, Mr. Sheridan, just that question?
Well, I would have a follow-up to that.
Well, we don't normally do a dialogue, but I want to.
I see. I understand. Okay. Sure, that's the question.
Okay, fair enough. I think everybody will say, Mr. Town, you want to just address that very quickly?
Thank you. The general plan update in and of itself would not affect Measure E per se. Measure E would still exist. It would still be on the books. It's still in ordinance. It is in effect until 2026, unless extended. So the general plan update per se would not change Measure E in any way.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Sheridan. All right, we have no more speaker cards in this item. It is a department report and we can entertain a motion. Ms. Bill de la Pena?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. As we were discussing Measure E, this topic did come about as to updating our general plan, why we needed to do it, also with the state encouraging cities to focus on different areas, such as the ones that I mentioned. I would like to move that we move ahead with staff to look into initiating this as well as into possible funding, how it would be funded. So we have an idea as to where it would be coming from and so forth. And then when staff does come back, we could look at the different elements that are needed, such as still noise needs to be updated, obviously, whether to include environmental justice or climate change or healthy communities or even economic development, which obviously is very important as well.
All right, Mr. Price. No motion? That's just kind of a discussion? Get it going?
No, I think that was a motion.
It was a motion, okay. So we have a motion on the table, Ms. Bill de la Pena is moving that we direct staff to start the process for initiating an update of the general plan. Is that fair? All right. So speak to the motion.
Okay. Thank you. I think there's, given that we have not done a comprehensive general plan review in a number of years, it is not a bad idea that we take a look at that. I think that the timing right now is not best, given that we are coming into another arena cycle here. I suspect that our numbers are going to increase significantly. I think to begin this process now without having that number first might put us behind the eight ball. I also know that there are a myriad of bills circulating up in Sacramento that are going to preempt local control, or at least they're going to attempt to preempt local control. And we, cities throughout the state, will continue to battle against that. I think that, you know, I'm concerned about staff resources. I'm concerned about the cost. I wouldn't mind taking a look at what money is available out there. I think that would be prudent to take a look at that and what the dates for those grant opportunities are. I don't know that I'm quite ready yet. I don't know that I have enough information to be able to say that I'd go along with initiating the process of a general plan review under those circumstances. You know, if I could, please, let me just continue. I think that we've, as we've seen from the numbers that were part of the report that was presented to us before this item, for a number of years, we did nothing toward our arena numbers. Well, excuse me. No, we did. I'm sorry. It was marginal progress, I think is what you termed it. But they weren't in the areas that the state wants to see progress. We are now, just now, starting to move the needle a little bit with the, those pre-screening applications that we have conditionally moved forward on. I expect that when those come back to us, that we will see numbers larger than what we saw before. All of that in motion gives me pause to initiate that now. So, and I'll leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Price. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Fox. I'll tell you what, at this juncture, I would not be in favor of committing three years of staff time and a million and a half dollars to updating the general plan. I feel that we've already updated seven of the mandatory elements. We've been doing that gradually over time. We are embarking on the biggest street paving project in the history of the city for, I don't know, 15, 20 million bucks. We are putting in sidewalks on Westlake Boulevard, which is going to cost millions of dollars. We want to build our downtown infrastructure, widen the sidewalks, fix the streets, which is going to cost another slew of money. And I think this grant thing, at very best, could very minimally defray the cost. And we're not going to get, nobody's going to pay us a million and a half dollars to update our general plan. We're going to pay it ourselves. And you know what? I'm getting the sense that one of the purposes of this is to adjust that allowable number of units that the general plan calls for the city of Thousand Oaks, which I believe is about 81,000. I just don't see the need to do that, speaking to that one specific item, because we're never, ever going to get to 81,000 units in this city, believe me. We're at 48,000 now and we're on about average for most of the cities in Ventura County. That's about 35% from units to population. And considering the fact that we have a few small infill spaces left and a couple of opportunity sites, it's not a cause for me to have any kind of alarm over. Our city would have to grow by 70,000 people to hit that number. We'd have to, it'd be like bringing Camarillo into Thousand Oaks. And you know what, folks, it's just not going to happen. I may be digressing a little bit, but I'm sensing that that could be one of the reasons to go through this arduous million and a half dollar process, when something in there is just impossible to happen. So anyway, I guess you can tell that I would not, I don't want to initiate the process at this point. I don't want to commit staff time to it. I think the general plan is fine the way it is. I think we can adjust it as we move along and there's no point spending a million and a half of taxpayer dollars on something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. Ms. Bill de la Pena, you're the maker of the motion.
Thank you. To speak to Mr. Adams' point regarding the base units, certainly the base units have something to do with it, but it affects cities everywhere who do this general plan update. The state itself recommends that cities do this because we do need to keep up and we need, there are elements that need to be updated on a regular basis and we have done so over the past few years. But it is vitally important that general plans be updated and we've never done this in the history of the city. This would be the first complete, and the city is now 50 years old, over 50 years old. It's never happened, or at least not to this degree. So we are behind the eight ball. And regarding the laws that are coming from Sacramento, that will be dealt with with our housing element. It has to be continuously updated. And there are laws coming from Sacramento on a regular basis that take away, that continue to take away local control from cities and it is very, very lamentable. But if we, that shouldn't stop us from not doing general plan updates simply because there are new laws coming in every year. That's why the housing element is being updated every year. If we were to go by the notion that because Sacramento changes things, we can't do anything, then no city would ever be able to do anything in terms of their general plan amendments or reviews. We are a city with a vision. We have sophisticated residents who expect certain standards from the city of Thousand Oaks and those standards need to be met. And in order to meet them, we do need to update the entire general plan. Is it very expensive? Of course it is. Do I like it? Not a bit. Not a bit. We are spending money elsewhere. We just spent $11 million on infrastructure improvements and so forth, but this is an investment in the city's future that to get it right, to use the information we received from our residents during this very arduous visioning project process in 2014. And it is something that I think will be up to par what is expected of the city of Thousand Oaks. You can forget about the base unit, you know, I mean, yes, that is going to be part of it, but overall, this is housekeeping, this is updating, this is something that is maintenance, that, you know, basically deferred maintenance. We've been deferring this for decades and it has to be done sooner or later. Do we wait another 10 years? You know, of course, we will have many more laws having come down from Sacramento breathing down our necks. This is not something that, I don't embrace the cost at all, but this is an investment in the city's future. That's the way I see it. So that is why I made the motion to have staff look into, start to look into this.
Could I just respond to that? I do believe we are meeting the city, the residents' expectations of the city. I believe we're meeting that, except perhaps in the housing area, but that's another story altogether. What I would like to ask staff to do, and you mentioned these new laws that are coming from the state of California, I believe 15 bills have been passed recently. There's another 24 pending. One of them is the very controversial SB 827, which requires housing within a half mile of a transit system. It could mean multi-story housing, takes away the power of the cities. There's another one, SB 35, that just passed. In fact, the two group of notary candidates both want three and a half million housing units built between now and 2024. That's a pretty tall order. That could have an effect on our city. Anyway, I'd like to see the staff come back with a review of that and how it will affect or could affect Thousand Oaks, number one. And number two, I'd like to see staff come back with kind of a state of the housing situation here for workforce housing here in the city. You know, where we stand, how much we have, do we need more and how would we get it built? And I think that could be very informative. But I tell you, I just, you know, I think our general plan, we've been amending it as we go along and I think that's serving the purpose. And we have so many other things going on, I just can't see a three-year, million and a half dollar commitment to that at this point. I really can't.
Let me offer maybe a modest compromise. I think Ms. Bill de la Pena's point is, at some point, cities do a general plan update. It is part of their responsibility. Mr. Price brings up some points with respect to what's going on in the state. Nevertheless, there will always be bills that are being passed that affect general plans, housing, and the items that we're talking about. I do believe, though, that this is a kind of a programmatic issue that I think is better dealt with at goal setting. It's a big-ticket item and I think it needs to be looked at in the context of the next goal setting, which is sometime at the end of the year, I guess in January, right? First meeting in May. Okay, so I think we ought to probably have a conversation in our goal setting within the context of a larger program that we want to achieve. It's not, it's not three years, but I think we can look at it in the context of what we're looking at for the next couple of years. And then that gives the staff of council is poised to start the process, then we can start programming that in our budget and look at it from that perspective. So would you be open to maybe looking at moving it to goal setting rather than just...
I will certainly be open to moving it to goal setting, whatever it takes to perhaps explain to the public also that the city has not done this before.
Right.
This is the first time. It needs to be done. If not now, when? So the timing will never be right for a general plan update, in my opinion. And while we are already looking at different areas of the general plan, changing the zoning or the general plan designation, we might as well look at everything. So that's why I think this timing is actually excellent. So yes, I'd be more than happy to discuss this at the goal setting session in May, which for the very first time will also be televised, I understand. It's never happened before. So yes, I'm excited about that.
All right, Mr. Price and then Mr. Adams. Are you good? Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's a good solution. Discuss it during goal setting, makes sense. But in the interim, I would like to reiterate, I'd like staff to come back with... back with, and address those two issues. What's happening in Sacramento, how these laws are going to affect the city of Thousand Oaks. What do they mean for infill projects? What do they mean for, you know, how affordable housing, workforce housing, all this. And secondly, give us kind of a State of the Union as far as where we are in workforce housing.
All right. Mr. Powers, on that, those two items?
And yes, those two items. And perhaps we can, you know, endeavor to fold those in together in, in the, in the goal-setting session. So, that's what we'll, we'll work towards, and while still trying to not overwhelm you with content that evening.
So, I withdraw my motion then, correct?
Okay, so that was my, going to be my point. Either you have to withdraw the motion, and we then would need another motion to at least receive the report under recommendation, number one. So, if the maker of the motion is going to withdraw that motion, then there is no motion on the table.
Then I'll make the motion to receive and to move the discussion to the goal-setting session meeting in May.
All right. Discussion on that. All right, hearing none. Prepare the vote, please.
The motion carries five zero.
All right, that is approved. That concludes our department reports. Thank you, Mr. Town. And we are going to move to item twelve. That's the council issues and recommendations follow-up items. Twelve A is the National League of Cities National Conference, and Mr. Price is going to handle that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May, or excuse me, March tenth through fourteenth, the mayor and I attended the National League of Cities Annual Conference held in Washington, D.C. Prior to that, we spent two days lobbying on the Hill, and we had some excellent meetings. I want to thank Congresswoman Julia Brownlee for once again, meeting us personally and listening to what it is we had to say. We continue to work on the South Branch Flood Plain project with the Army Corps of Engineers. She had a lot of, a lot of good things to, to say about things that are happening here in Thousand Oaks. She, she enjoys coming home for visits, back and forth. So, that was a, a very good meeting, and she was very supportive. As a matter of fact, there was one particular item that we mentioned to her about a bill that is being proposed by, I think it's Congresswoman Barrigan, and, from San Pedro. And that bill, H.R. twenty-nine forty-three, is really an open space acquisition grant bill. And we let Ms. Brownlee know that we were supportive of that, and asked if she would consider signing on to that bill. And by the next day, she had already done that. So, that was a good, a good walk away from that meeting there. We also had a brief meeting, the mayor and I did, with Congressman Salud Carvajal, just to introduce ourselves, because there are times when we have projects that cross jurisdictional boundaries there. So, that was a good, a good meeting. We met with senior counsel from the Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee on Water Resources to discuss the proposal to extend the life of an NPDS permit from five years, the current five years, to, the proposal is fifteen years. The city is taking a position that ten years is probably the best for, for cities. And there are a number of other folks who join us in that. Right now, we get a permit and then immediately begin the application process for our next permit five years later. And the turnaround is, is just too quick. It's too costly. And I believe we have four different permits that the city has. So, there's four separate applications. We met with Housing and Urban Development to discuss our homeless issue, as we indicated that we would. I think we walked away from that meeting with a better understanding of the resources available to us, not just through the federal government, but through locally here. And there's new reporting guidelines that will hopefully bring some of the services that have here before stayed on the other side of the grade down here into the Cano Valley and perhaps Simi Valley, if they care to voice their desire as well. But different reporting requirements are going to require that they, or mandate, that they share the wealth with us and, and help us with our homeless problem. We met with a, the National Endowment for the Arts, discussed our Paseo project here in the downtown core, heard about some grant opportunities there that are available for art, public art projects, and some really interesting ways of engaging the public in determining what we would like to see in that area, what they would like to see in that area. So, you can look for, and we already have a number of those on tap. I think there are five different events that are already scheduled now, and we'll probably be increasing that and using some of the, the new ideas that we learned during that meeting as well. We also met with Josh Escavell, Westlake High School grad, who was with Senator Dianne Feinstein's office, just going over our, the city's priorities for, for this year. And then, and I'm wrapping up. Finally, we met with the FAA, and that was a meeting that we looked forward to. We invited the FAA to come out here and meet with our residents to discuss the change in air patterns, particularly over the Newbury Park area. They declined the invitation. However, they did commit to working with the Congresswoman's office in putting together a very in-depth, hopefully it's as in-depth as we were presented with, an in-depth explanation of the changes that were made, the why, the how, and just all of the facts that, that surround that issue. I think it's important that the residents out here know that, and that is something that, that the city of Thousand Oaks has little or no control over. So, I, we thank them quite a bit for, for speaking to us for, I think we were in there for over an hour. And we did meet with Senator Kamala Harris's office and go over the same federal priorities with, with them. And then we fall, or we concluded those Hill visits with, in Congresswoman Barrigan's office to thank her for the bill that, the House Resolution twenty-nine forty-three, the Open Space Acquisition or Outdoor Recreation Legacy Partnership Grant Program that she is pushing. And there's, there's a number of people who are signed on to that. And then beyond that, as a member of the Board of the National League of Cities, I sit on the membership committee, and at that meeting, different ways to increase the membership were discussed, and our own Mina Leba, Legislative Affairs Manager for the city of Thousand Oaks, wowed them and came up with what I think is a great suggestion to include universities with MPA programs in public policy. They'd be great partners to have, and it'd be a great, almost, you know, learning ground for, for those folks, and might even land them a job once they walk out of college. So, all in all, great meetings. We attended a number of different sessions, one of which was on local preemption. I thought they were going to talk about a number of different things. What they spoke about was one particular item, and that is the 5G rollout, specifically the efforts that are being undertaken nationwide here to preempt cities from stopping the utilities from placing the 5G technology, those twenty-seven square foot refrigerators on our light standards. That is something that isn't going away. We defeated it last year. The governor vetoed that bill. I don't know that there's a similar bill this legislative session, but I know that it's not their last run at the state of California, and we'll be ready to try and, and defeat it when it comes through again, or at least come up with a compromise that we can live with. So, with that, thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Move to item thirteen.
I have a, Mayor Fox. Thank you. I, I hit the button. Maybe it's not working today. Okay. Mr. Price, as they say in you speak, you buried the lead. We were talking about the FAA when you mentioned it regarding the, and, and I'm glad that you, that you met with the FAA. And the question was, you know, what are they doing? What is Congresswoman Julia Brownlee doing, since she said she was going to be working on it? So, I'm, I'm very glad that, that you were able to meet with them. But I don't know, will it, I'm not sure whether it will lead to any changes in the, in the flight pattern.
I think the, the short answer to that is that it, it likely won't. And I know that there were residents down here suggesting that the, that other cities successfully sued the FAA and, and won. And I had done a little research and knew a little bit about that case, but unfortunately, the facts are in no way similar. That was a completely different set of facts. And the long and short of it is that with the number of airplanes up there in that airspace and the limited airspace that exists, particularly in that area, because of military airspace that, that folks don't recognize is there. Certainly, we're all aware that Point Magoo is there, and that that's a, they have airspace there. They have a missile range. So, we got, you got to steer clear of that. And then, on the other side of that, Edwards Air Force Base has their airspace, so there's a very narrow corridor. And that's what we're dealing with. That's what the FAA is dealing with. And this, the changes that were done were done with public safety in mind. That's the number one concern of the FAA. And they, they, they were very, very, took, took all the time in the world to, to explain everything to us, answer our questions. And I don't know, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think Mr. Price is accurately describing. They, they had probably seven or eight people. They didn't just bring in a low-level staff person. They had their major management people there, and these are folks that understood aviation, they understood flight patterns. They go through a variety of processes by which they, and models by which they center on these flight paths. As Mr. Price points out, through really three contributing factors that are, again, where we would encourage residents to contact the Congresswoman's office, because, you know, it is a federal issue, and, and she has direct oversight with the FAA. Three, three items. First, the military airspace, that was a change. They used to be able to share the airspace. They no longer can. Number two is they showed us the different vectors that the planes prior to the change would travel upon. And then it was, you know, many hundreds, if not thousands, of lines of different vectors of, of different flight paths. Now, because of safety, they've taken all those different vectors, and they've shrunk them down into essentially a monorail, if you will, like the kind they have in Disneyland. And so, all those flights that used to take a, a large amount of airspace are now funneled through essentially a monorail. And what that does with, from the FAA's perspective, that increases safety tremendously, because once they're on that monorail, they can program the jet, and it goes right to where it needs to go. So, prior to that, there was human discussion, human voice, and a lot of opportunity for human error that was in that process. They've eliminated all of that. So, the FAA is, many people would not be surprised to hear, is all about safety. And the guy was very serious, although I think he said it in light. They guarantee a landing for every takeoff. And so, that was the, the second point. And the third one is the ambient noise in Dos Vientos is very quiet. And actually, I'm the one that brought that up, but I also live under a flight path, and it's essentially the same altitude. I never hear the airplanes. And that's because I live in the middle part of town, and the ambient noise at Jan's and Moore Park is quite a bit noisier than it is in Dos Vientos, where it's virtually silent even during the day. And so, that ambient noise, even though the flights are on the same altitude, it's magnified. You just hear it. And I was just out in the yard today, and I could see the planes. They're flying over. I can't hear them at all. But I, I'm sure they're hearing them in Dos Vientos. So, the folks that have come down, their complaints are, they are legitimate. There has been a definite change in the flight path, and the flight paths are not likely to change anytime soon. They've done these models for, leading up to this. But it is in part out of the control of the FAA because of the military airspace. That was the biggest issue, and it, it's on both sides. And then the other issue was, in a sense, this, this monorail system that they have that really does increase passenger and flight safety. So, those are, those are really the three areas, and the ambient noise.
Well, thank you for the most thorough explanation and answer that I have ever heard regarding the noise issue in Dos Vientos from both Councilmember Price and Mayor Fox. I hope that the residents of Dos Vientos are listening or watching, or perhaps will be reading about it in the paper this week, that the city of Thousand Oaks does take this issue seriously, met with the FAA, and there's virtually nothing that we can do. So, I appreciate the, the explanation. We, we tried, but it is really out of our hands. Thank you.
You bet. Okay, we'll move to item thirteen. That's follow-up items from the city manager, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Our next regular city council meeting is on Tuesday, the tenth of April. We currently have four special presentations that evening, ranging from performance from five-star theatricals to recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, Arbor Earth Day, and presentation of a Tree B City USA Awards. We will have a public hearing on the cannabis ordinance revision that we discussed earlier tonight, a department report on Measure E, Measure E citywide pre-screening criteria, and a number of consent calendar items. That is it for right now. Wish everyone a happy spring break for those that will be traveling during spring break.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. We have a no-close-session items?
Correct.
All right, and that brings us to our adjournment tonight. Tonight, we're going to be adjourning in honor and memory of former mayor and councilmember Dwayne Dewey Groton. Dewey passed away in February. Dewey was dedicated community leader in having served in the city council from nineteen seventy-two to nineteen seventy-five. He served as mayor in nineteen seventy-six. Dewey graduated from Los Angeles State and attended Western Reserve University Dental School. After moving to Thousand Oaks in nineteen sixty-five, he opened his first orthodontic office in Thousand Oaks, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Dewey stated he ran for city council by joining a group of businesspeople that placed ten possible candidate names that were written on a blackboard. He missed the next week's meeting, and at the follow-up meeting, he was astonished to see that of all the ten names, his was the only one remaining. He got the short straw, apparently. For the kidding, he took, Dewey agreed to run for city council, but also put a condition in there that he wanted local businesses that would be willing to offer grants each year for the community youth activities, which the Jan's Corporation gladly provided. Dewey's passion for taking care of local children through his dental practice and helping to build a community playfields for youth sports activities was his greatest accomplishments. Dewey was, Thousand Oaks Community Sport gave me everything. I want to be remembered that I tried to give something back through public service. Dewey will be remembered by his loving wife of fifty-seven years, Gloria, his children, and nine grandchildren. Dewey's commitment to leadership and passion and for service is an integral part of our community here in Thousand Oaks history, and he will be greatly missed. And our thoughts and prayers go to his family. And with that, we will adjourn to our regularly scheduled council meeting on April tenth, twenty eighteen.